Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 19 Farmington School Board Meeting. We apologize for the late start. We did have a couple of non-public meetings to attend to this evening before we started the public portion of our meeting. At this time, I would like to ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. Mrs. Doyle is excused this evening. And is there any public participation at this time? Seeing none, we'll get into the agenda. And we have minutes listed on the agenda, but we don't have them in our folder for review, so we'll have to add those to the next agenda. So we will table these, make a motion to table these minutes till the next meeting. Second by Sharon, Mrs. Johnston, any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
And which means we'll have to take them off the table at the next meeting, even though they appear on the agenda. We'll get into reports, starting with Farmington High School.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
So on the top, just today, so the numbers are off a little bit, we had about four more suspensions today, just so you know. So it went up by a pretty good margin. And then we adjusted the homeschool students. We had two students come back last week. So they are currently doing some ed-mentum classes because it's hard to put them in a class with only like four weeks left. So their ed-mentum is an online class. So they're doing online classes inside the library to kind of finish up the year. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had Mrs. Cronin, Mrs. Williams, our guidance counselor and SEL teacher, going into the different grade levels and talking about healthy relationships, social media. This week, the seniors and juniors will be talking about consent with the officers going in and kind of talking with them. So they just have some good background and some healthy knowledge of, you know, wrongs or rights and wrongs of healthy relationships. We did have the SAT and PSATs, and as we were, or as I was writing this, those were just coming in. So Kim hasn't really been able to kind of dissect them yet, so we'll have more for you in the next month to kind of talk about what we're seeing, if we saw it go up or not. We did have, one thing we can say is that our participation was close to 100, if not 100%. So something we didn't have last year. You know, Kim really worked hard and with me to really kind of get that out and get the students kind of understanding that they needed to take it. And then we had the makeups that kind of filled in the gaps where those students didn't necessarily come, were able to take it. AP testing, that's been going on also for the last two weeks. I think the last of it was today for makeups. So that's good for them. Hopefully, they get, you know, good scores and get that college credit because that's really ultimately what it's about. It's not just the high school credit, but the college credit especially. SAS testing will be on Thursday, I believe, with makeups next week. And that will tell us the portion of the SAT that we don't get is the science, and SAS kind of fills that in for us. So we'll kind of see what they're doing in science and seeing if there is some gaps there or something that we need to work on with the students as we go along. Or what is it that they're missing? It'll kind of give us an idea. Scheduling, so last year, or the last two years, as we walked into the, into the fall, scheduling was all over the place. This year was much better. It just, we started late trying to figure out stuff as we switched over to the computer and did some stuff. So really, we kind of reached out to, we have mentors. And Kevin Mosher's mentor was gracious enough to kind of give us their schedule. So we've been on their schedule this year about when to meet with students, when to start scheduling. I know we started working on the program of studies early so that we could get that out. And now we are almost done getting them into the computer to be able to run a report to start putting what classes we have, like what ones we're going to run by numbers. And then that will be turned into the different blocks, and then the kids will be populated into those. So we're hoping by the end of the month, but maybe into June, as teachers are leaving, they'll get to see the schedules. We are planning not to necessarily release them to students because we don't know who's returning and not returning, or what classes might be able to run or not run depending on who comes back or doesn't come back. You never know. So we're kind of holding off until the end of summer to put those out, or first day if we could. But we'll try to have them out before the first day so they can see them, and then kids can come in pre or before that week and be able to kind of fix those schedules if they need to. So pretty much everyone should be in a class hopefully by the end of the school year this year. Early release, we had basically two, two types of things that we were working on. We're working on handbooks. Mrs. Pomeroy has been very adamant that we work on these because it's important that everyone, the staff, the students know what's coming up, what to expect. So we've been kind of really focusing on what is it that we need to kind of change, and we've asked our staff to kind of help with that. So we reached out, or I reached out on Wednesday, asked them two questions about, or asked them a question about what would make a successful year for you and the students. And they kind of looked at different, different areas to kind of fix those up for what they believe. And we're going to look at them as a group to kind of see what sticks, doesn't stick, and what is purposeful. And then upcoming fundraisers, the car wash did not happen. That was the only one that should have been taken off, but senior banquet's this Sunday, so that's exciting. And then I don't know if there's a car wash in June or not. She said there was no car wash, so I'm not sure if that one's staying. And then Project Grad is the day of the graduation. So about 15 seniors, I think it is, are going down to Manchester to do some activities one last time together that day, and we'll be with them, so that's my report.
Any questions?
I have a couple. How many seniors are at risk of not graduating?
At risk? We're looking at about 10, but those are fluid, so they've been kind of off and on as we've gone along. The ones that we're paying close attention to are the ones that are in the V-Lax. So V-Lax has been really great for seniors to get classes that we can't offer, but they also have a 36-week course. So if they started really late, they can't go into the 36 weeks. So we've been, I know Mrs. Frankwick's been on them for the last month and a half saying the end is May, and a lot of them have caught up. So we're really down from who would take them, and we've had a lot of participation in V-Lax this year. So it was more than expected, but we're, you know, we're on them every day. Some letters are being sent out today, or tomorrow. They were made up today that I signed that just says, look, you need to make sure that your, your seniors on top of this. And they're really, it's just finishing up those classes. There is two, or there's one definite that we're looking at, and then one potential to kind of be with them. But we're not, we're still talking to that student, seeing where they're at with the teachers to make sure before we say, make any definitive answers or decisions on that.
Do you know how many seniors there are total?
How many seniors are our total? I believe the last I looked, it was 54. But that again, kind of in and out depending on.
And I might have missed this. What about the top 10 dinner?
Mr. Mosher's been working on trying to get us a spot, so we, we've been working on it. It's in the works.
Okay. I just didn't see on this, oh, that's upcoming fundraiser event. I read it as upcoming events, and I didn't see the top 10.
No, I just, he reached out to a few. We're trying to narrow it down to the, to the ones, there was a few that reached back out. We're just trying to figure out which one and then get that to you. Obviously, you try to get a night that works for everyone and then, you know, do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, get, get a night that works for the kids.
Yeah.
Okay.
But don't work around us.
Okay.
We're invited, which is wonderful, but I don't want, it's the kids that are most important to treat to dinner.
Yep. Sounds good. I'll tell them. But he had a few, he had a few people call back. We're just waiting to see. I don't know if it's like they're, they only have certain nights or what they're doing, so. But we should have that soon.
Okay.
Did the senior, did they, do their lock-in?
They did. That was interesting.
I didn't hear it. I, I thought it had happened, and then I hadn't heard it, so.
Yeah, so that, what was that? Jeez. Two, two weeks ago? Yeah. Sorry, it just starts blending at this time of year. Two weekends ago, so yeah, they came in. It was very interesting. So they, you know, did some activities together. They were watching videos in here or doing paint, if you go down to the CAF, they painted, we had like a, the blocks, we picked a level, and they just painted spots that they wanted, that was instead of doing the tiles. So there's some paintings in the cafeteria that they did. And then they did some activities in the gym, and then they did their prank. And their pranks were basically messing up rooms in a certain way, putting chairs upside down and confetti. So they had a good time, though, from what I hear. I left at 2:00. Kevin, bless him, came in at 2:00. So he was here from 2:00 to 7:00 finishing up, so, but that was, it was nice. They were, they seemed to be having fun with each other one last time.
Nice.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Wilson.
Okay, so shout-outs this month for April. Just a huge shout-out to our teachers for their hard work in preparing the students for their SAS testing that started at the end of April with our 5th graders. That's continuing last week, all of last week, all of this week, and then part of next week. We want to finish up by the deadline, which is the 30th. So we're looking to be on a really good track to meet that deadline. We are going to meet that deadline. We are. There was a wonderful visit from the LRTC, a group of students who are part of that program, came down for our 6th and 8th graders. And they did some dress-up, and they explained the programs that were available to them, and they had a lot of fun. And the students that they sent were super, super great kids, and our students had a lot of fun with that activity as well, so that was great. And they were really excited about what they heard and what the possibilities were for them as they kind of moved up in the grades. I got to experience my first peep war this April. That was a lot of fun. And to know that Cynthia Sparks is our super-secret competitor in the 4th grade was absolutely phenomenal. She had things camouflaged and hidden, and at one point she was on the ground, like flat on the ground in the copy machine where she had hidden and camouflaged some peeps. It was wonderful to watch. It was a wonderful experience. The 4th grade did win the championship this year, so that was really cool. So we were really excited for that. And the kids had a blast watching their teachers compete as well, so that was great. We had a very well-attended, three very well-attended awards assemblies. We had a good number of students who were acknowledged for getting onto the honor roll than we had previously had, so that was wonderful. And some of them, a lot of them, were first timers on the honor roll, so that was awesome as well. 5th grade kicked off our SAS testing at the end of the month, right before vacation, just as their teachers had left to go on maternity leave. They worked really hard, and like I said, we're going to continue that right up until the 30th. We did a bus driver appreciation day. Mrs. Pomeroy worked with the art teacher, and the art teacher worked with some students, and they made this beautiful poster for the bus drivers. And that was really well-received. They were really happy to see that. They loved that the students kind of painted the bus drivers all through the bus, hanging out the windows, doing all the things that they're not supposed to do on the bus. So they had a good time with that. I had a wonderful assistant principal appreciation week, very wonderful cards, recognition, a yummy lunch. It was, it was a very nice time, and I really appreciated it and very thankful to be a part of the Henry Wilson family, so that was great. The safety team met this month, and there were no major issues or concerns that came up at this time. And at this point, we have not had any phone outages or internet outages. We've had one little roof thing, little leaky thing, and we did have to refix a door, but nothing major at this time. Any questions? I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And how are you?
Bonjour, na. See, mine's really short and sweet, kind of as Jamie had alluded, it was teacher appreciation week. I just have to say, I am so thankful. Our PTA has really stepped up. They were kind of nonexistent. We needed a resuscitation, really, with like the defibrillator. Because, you know, this is my fourth year, and they, you know, took a hiatus probably post-COVID. It was really hard to, you know. And they really tried, not for not trying, but our PTA has really stepped up this year. They're, they're meeting monthly. They're doing the Zoom option for families at home. Think anything moving forward would be to engender more membership, you know, getting parents involved. But the ones that are there, showing up every month, thank you. Our PTA did such a heartfelt, they did a lot for teachers this week, which was a really nice reprieve, that it wasn't all on admin. To have some of that help was just, ha, ha, ha. It was very nice. So thank you to all, PTA and Ashley Scala, the president. We appreciate it. So we recognize nurse appreciation as well. Mrs. Goodspeed is phenomenal. She fielded so many illnesses and sicknesses and parent phone calls herself. So thank you, Mrs. Goodspeed. We love you. SAS testing, we are having this week. Information from the state and just background information, how to access results for parents for grades 3 through 8. Was on Dojo, went out to parents, and ours is Tuesday through Thursday this week. It's kind of nice because I did it last year, so it's kind of a well-oiled machine with returning staff and the kids. We pumped them up today with a SAS parade, a little Eye of the Tiger action, and the kids all walked through the school and had posters and signs and noise makers. And so they were, they were really excited, and they will have a celebration after. Our teachers have worked their butts off this year getting ready for SAS. And that was really refreshing, too, returning staff to recognize and reflect and be like, you know what, we should even start earlier. And I already have them saying, we're going to start earlier next year. I mean, so that's the best, when it, you know, comes from them and they recognize and they care about these students doing well. So kudos to the 3rd grade team. Other than that, we, in hindsight, I apologize, I should have invited you guys. It was the first time the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard came Friday, last Friday. Tarsha Doyle, the STEAM teacher, coordinated it, but a free, two schools, a huge volunteer, I was blown away, a huge volunteer team, showed up and set up all these tables and these experiments. They were there all day. So kudos that they do that out of the goodness of their heart to, you know, plant a seed. I was just talking to, I don't know, somebody today, and I was like, you know what? Not every kid is going to be an academic. Not every kid is going to just have that intrinsic like drive. Sometimes for a kid, it's woodshop. Sometimes it's music, art, right? So if we can find that little nugget, you know, to get our kids to graduate, then, you know, it's, it's important. It's rewarding, right? So they did all these cool science things, and we're already, I'm like, please book them to come back. They were, they were fabulous. So, you know, New Hampshire, we have such rich resources here for our kids, and to tap into that, I'm really grateful about that. Other than that, that's it. It's almost June, so I'm still standing. Yeah.
Questions? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are getting punchy here.
Yeah, sorry. SRO report.
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
Hi. First, I wanted to thank the board for approving our proposal. The kindergartners came to the Public Safety Building last Friday and had a blast at all of the stations and fingerprinting. They got the bracelets, and we read to them, and a lot of them liked the book. So a lot of good feedback about that. There's going to be hopefully some pictures in your guys' next report. A lot coming up this month. We've been in some of the classrooms here. We have another lecture that Mr. Coro spoke about, that we're going to be speaking to consent with guidance and helping out with that, helping the kids understand RSA's a little bit. Yeah, a ton coming up in May. We have senior banquet coming up this Monday, so yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a nice, busy stretch to the end of the year.
Why is senior banquet on a Monday?
It's a Sunday. Sunday.
Oh, on a Sunday.
Well, it's.
Even better, right?
Well, it's a, it will, it's, they don't have school Monday.
The kids have off on Monday.
That's right. So we, it's a long weekend. That makes sense. Okay, sorry. Any questions?
Yeah, on the top of your report, the number of incidents per school, maybe it's like this every month. I was just so surprised to see the high numbers in Henry Wilson and Valley View. I know Henry Wilson is the largest school, but Farmington, the high school only had 19, so I don't know if you guys could speak to that at all? The difference between the 30s and the 19s?
Yeah, so I mean, some of it comes from just the, the types of incidents. I mean, some of the stuff that we have at the high school are fewer in number, but usually more involved. Once we get involved with those types of things, like whether it's vapes or, or things that could potentially have a criminal element, we're very fortunate that we have not had as many last month or this year. And I, I do think that a lot of the kids, now that we have returned for a few years now, are, are understanding as they get older kind of how things work and how things are different and the roles that we play here. And I do think that that has an impact on them, and we've been very, very fortunate this year at the high school. I will say today, today we did have quite the day. We added four more to the numbers today. So it, it really, honestly, month to month is a, is a hit or a miss. There are some days where, where we're at Henry Wilson all day, and we are rocking and rolling from, from one thing to the next. There are some days where, where Valley View's got quite a few things going on, and today happened to be, happened to be a high school day. So it really depends on, on what's going on at each school. But yeah, no, they're, they've been great, and I think that they're maturing and they're, they're kind of learning about how some of that stuff works. And little mistakes are fine, but we're just trying to make sure that they don't make the big ones, the big life-changing ones, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Do we have any unfinished business? Oh, I want to say this, though, before the principals leave. Sorry, sorry. When we had office hours, our last office hours, we, I asked some specific questions about the school-wide approach to behavior management. And I, I didn't feel like the teachers could really articulate what that looks like in each building. So again, I'm going to throw the challenge out for the summer. You know, we set that challenge two summers ago. I'm not sure we've made the progress on that, that the board was expecting to see. And, and the reason, and maybe we have, but when you ask staff to explain what the, what the school-wide approach is to behavior management, and if they can't do it, then we're not there yet. So it's not, it's not, I'm not trying to be highly critical. I'm just trying to sort of light the fire under that again, and let's, let's put some attention into that, okay? And I, I really think, once we can all articulate what our approach is to behavior management, and we have a shared philosophy, these types of numbers will go down. Thank you. Any unfinished business? I mean, it's on there. I don't know.
Yep.
Municipid. Did I say that right?
You did. You did.
Was there a bus thing? No, there was not a bus thing. Nope, sorry. Sorry, I thought there was a bus. Nice to see you.
Nobody can name it all.
Okay, perfect.
Hot mics.
So, speaking of hot mics, we're going to bring out a hot Steven. Anyways, so Municipid was brought to me by Steven Henry. And I'm, so you know how we put things out to bid, right?
Yes.
Well, there's a site where you can bid on all kinds of stuff, and it's for municipalities. I personally got caught up in an auction on a Chevy Silverado. Didn't get it, but that's okay. And I think it's something we should think about doing.
For personal use, friends.
For the farm. Anyways, so this is the man who turned it on to me. Tell us about Municipid, Steve.
It's an auction website that targets municipalities. There's a number of places in New Hampshire that use it. They have a following. They do the marketing, so you're not paying Foster's $75 for an ad that three people will see.
So is this, sorry, you're probably going to answer this question, so I'll just, I'll just stop, I'll just stop.
No, go ahead, Nick.
Well, is it? Is this for when we're going out to bid for something? Or, okay.
No, this would be for selling your surplus assets.
Okay.
Like eBay. Get rid of a bus.
eBay for municipalities.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just gave them the name, everybody. Yes.
There's, there's a few that target governments. Govdeals is another one. They do a lot of federal stuff. There are states and municipalities that do that, and Municipid looks a little easier, especially for a smaller organization. And actually, look today, they don't charge the municipalities anything. And they only, they charge 9% to the buyer, which is pretty low as a buyer's premium goes. Usually, I'm paying 15 to 20% on most sites, so even the 9% is a low premium. The advantage is they give you a communication platform to communicate with bidders. They see your pictures. They can ask more questions about the item. So people can ask questions. The answers are posted for everybody to see. You can schedule viewing, stuff like that. Like the buses, people are probably going to want to come see them, and to get top dollar, you schedule time for people to come see them. But they've got a following. It, you know, reaches a very, much larger audience than just local postings would reach.
We'll have to look at our policy to make sure it checks off the box, the boxes. And if not, we could tweak the policy. Well, no, I mean, if it's, if it's more advantageous.
Yeah, I think it is.
I had a, I had a.
Now I'm going to go down a rabbit hole. Thank you.
Oh, you have to.
I'm already up.
I had a citizen reach out last week and was asking me questions about a bus in the parking lot down there. And I said, I don't know. If, if we're getting to get rid of it, then I wasn't sure where we're at, so.
In my opinion, because we put it out to the world, and anybody, so nobody can say you didn't do a good job of trying to get top dollar.
Yeah, exactly.
I think you'll get more going through Municipid than selling stuff yourself. That being said, I've gotten some pretty good deals there.
I'm looking at an ice machine. I'm in the market for an ice machine.
I think there's actually several up in Boscoon on there right now for ice machines.
That's one I'm looking for.
Okay, alright.
And there's a hot dog cart, too.
Yes, I saw the hot dog cart, but that was a little out of my price range.
Yeah, it's up over 1,500 bucks now.
We need a hot dog cart at camp.
So. So if you like, Steve and I can look into the policies and. Don't you like how I volunteered you?
Policies.
Well, we just glanced at, I mean, we can all look at, look that one up and see what it looks like.
Nice.
Probably will be fine. Alright, awesome.
That's exciting.
So, sorry, I still, I'm back to, well, no, no, I was off my personal bandwagon. So would we use, like, for all, like, are you talking, like, all this, like, furniture and, like, Little Red Schoolhouse? All the stuff that's in there?
They do, oh, they do real estate, too. You could actually put the Little Red Schoolhouse on there. I don't know if that's the best way to go with real estate, but all the stuff that's in there.
But I got, that's what I'm talking, like, is that what we would be, well?
I'm thinking the bus. I'm thinking that computer server. I'm thinking anything, you know, we'd offer first to the town if they didn't want it, and then that would be our next step. And, you know, we can put the minimum that we're looking for, the reserve. If you put a reserve on it and so forth, so I kind of like that. So I'm thinking anything we'd want to get rid of, we could put up and see if we could get something for it.
The furniture probably is of little to no value to anybody that would be bidding on that site, based on what I've seen furniture go for.
Like, what if we did, like, at Hay Day or something, like?
That might be a good place for the chairs and furniture.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm talking about.
Townwide Yard Sale.
Huh?
The Townwide Yard Sale.
That's coming up.
That's like next week or two weeks.
I just saw the post on Facebook for it. It's been scheduled.
Yeah.
June's in two weeks.
It is going to be June in two weeks, dear.
Yeah. Time's fine.
But computer servers, that kind of stuff, at least you go on there. Two-way radios.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. New rabbit hole. Thank you.
We have to sign a custodial agreement. I don't think we all signed it, do we?
No, just.
No, just you.
Just me, so Terry Donovan reached out on behalf of the custodial collective bargaining unit and asked if we could get that signed, so I will do that tonight. I have a couple of questions, but they fall into non-public. Is there any public participation at this time? If not, we have manifest sign. Our next meeting will be June 2nd. If not, we have manifest sign, our next meeting will be June second. Uh, I'll put that up, a week or so before graduation, before graduation. Um, you may see another meeting posted on the night of top ten dinner, should we all be at it, or at least three of us? Um, and I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session three. It says two on the agenda, but we have two non-publics to start the night. R S A ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, two, I for security.
So move.
So move by Mrs. Johnston, second by Mrs. Moser, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.
Good night.